I call the meeting to order, if you would. Please stand and join me as Vice Mayor Stacy Guppy leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Guppy.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Everyone has had a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Here's our motion concerning adoption of tonight's agenda for the council meeting. We have a motion, is there a second, to adopt the agenda? We have a second. Thank you, Mr. Guppy. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed, the like sign. The agenda for tonight's meeting is therefore adopted. And we'll go on to the consent agenda now. You have a copy of the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that any member would like to be pulled, would like to have pulled for further comment? Or is there a motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented?
So moved.
We have a motion that the agenda, consent agenda be approved as presented. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No, sir. We need to talk about heads.
I would really rather we not.
Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed, the like sign. The consent agenda for tonight's meeting is also approved. We have a couple of recognitions we were going to do tonight. We're going to postpone one of those. We have a promotion in the police department for recognizing Sergeant Garrett Hovis, but Chief Holland informs us that Mr. Hovis is out working right now, so he won't be able to make the meeting tonight, so we'll postpone that recognition until the next meeting. Now, I'd like to recognize Mr. Bill Dell, our Public Works Director, for a promotion in his department. Mr. Dell.
Thank you, Mayor, Town Council. It's a great honor to recognize this gentleman with us tonight for the second time, but at this time, he is being promoted to equipment operator, Mr. Rusty Quarterpassi. He's been with us for about six months to a year now, so he's done a really great job for us, so I'd like to ask Rusty to come up. He has been promoted to equipment operator after we had one retired, so I want you all to welcome Rusty as an equipment operator.
At this time, we'll move to item number six, which is a public hearing to receive public input on the proposed social district. To give you a little bit of background on this issue, this came up during last year's work session retreat, and the council has been looking at this for some time. We've had people who spoke at different council meetings, either in favor or against such a district. We've had representatives from Silva, which has one of these districts, to come over and talk. And we, at last month's meeting, the town council decided that before the council moves any further along this route of consideration of creating a district, that we need to have more public input, and so that's why we're having a public hearing tonight. Now, there are 526 or 527 municipalities in the state, and since the General Assembly passed this legislation to allow municipalities to have a social district, which is an area that permits the consumption of alcoholic beverages in certain areas at certain times under certain conditions, some 30-something municipalities have opted to go that route. Silva is one of them closest to us. It was discussed at the Waynesville Town Board meeting. They didn't take any action and actually put that one off for indefinite period of time. It was also brought up at the Murphy Town Council meeting, where it was discussed by the council, and they voted not to pursue it at this time. This board hasn't taken any action except to try to find out what we need to know about this, and one of the first things that the county, that the town wanted to do is find out if the town, if the county would be amenable to using some of the property included in the social district. There was a representation made to the county commissioners. No response was received one way or the other, and so as a result of that, that area around the square is not included in the quote "proposed" social district. That's a little bit of a background, but we're here to hear what you have to say tonight. This is not a discussion between the town council and the public. This is to hear what the public has to say. Under our rules of order, each person who wants to speak will have up to five minutes to do so, and we'd like to make sure that we stay on schedule if we can, so that everybody gets an opportunity to speak. Our attorney and our town manager will keep an eye on the clock to let you know when time's getting short. So with that, we'll open the public hearing, and the first person to speak at the public hearing is Norrell Kirkland.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. You probably planned this, that I'm sitting right next to Ron the talent. She is a very good proponent for this. You have my position paper. I don't need to speak.
You have written comments that you'd like to present?
You should all have a copy.
There's a copy up here. It wasn't signed, but I wasn't sure who it came from, but that was yours. So we have a copy of your comments, and so if you have nothing else, we'll move to the next speaker. The next speaker we have is Morgan Stewart.
Good evening. It's an honor to be here. Well, you take it for clarification, I thought 45 minutes. I was really prepared. Just kidding. I thought three minutes, so I'm going to go just a few minutes.
Normally it's three minutes, but our rules of order amended some time back to increase it up to five. You don't have to speak five. If you want to speak less than that, you're welcome to do so.
Just a few seconds over three minutes, that's okay. My name is Morgan Stewart. I am a permanent resident of Franklin for four years. I was asked to help some concerned citizens because I founded Stewart Communications, a marketing firm here, and because of my experience as a communications director for the Virginia Secretary of Commerce and Trade, which included its departments of economic development and tourism, and because I served as a marketing vice president for the New Orleans Public Private Economic Development Partnership. Maybe there are some gray areas to work through on this particular issue, but I believe there is some sound public opinion and economic development cases to be made for the social district. In examining this question with these folks that I'm working with, and given the holidays, we felt it critical to at least give a voice to those businesses directly impacted by the social district. To do this, we delivered surveys in person and via email to businesses on and around Main Street. The total responses were eliminated. 65% said it would increase revenue for specific businesses. 82% favored the social district as proposed. 86% felt the social district would attract visitors to Main Street, and 100% said Franklin must compete with neighboring communities for tourism. I have copies of these surveys, and I'll give them to you tonight. No matter how we broke it down, the numbers show that the majority of those in and around the social district zones support it. Of course, not everyone agrees. Someone said leveling the playing field is lazy. We should strive to be unique. Unfortunately, if this fails, we could be unique, as the only community around here without this emitter. Is that a problem? In bottom-line economic development terms, offering less to businesses and families is a losing formula. I have direct experience with this. In the '90s, Virginians opposing new economic development incentives said we already had everything we need, and while that mentality prevailed, we, Virginia, consistently lost opportunities to neighboring states like North Carolina. Upon leveling the incentive playing field, Virginia's economic performance took off. Today in Franklin, Drake, Duotec, Angel Medical, Noah's Ark, our schools, and virtually every business compete with surrounding communities for employees just to stay open. Without at least a level playing field, Franklin loses. Now, on a personal note, it's interesting that the social district opposition believe it will create a nightmare of drunken debauchery on Main Street. My family regularly visits Silva. Until now, we never knew a social district existed there. In terms of crime or citizen behavior, there is zero evidence Silva appears any different on any given day than Franklin. A quick news search reports that towns across North Carolina like Alvermore, Rivard, and Hickory have successful social districts, driving growth, and visitors in business, with no reported increases in crime. Why aren't those towns in ruins? What makes Franklin so different? I read online that out of 38 North Carolinian communities with social districts, two regret their decisions. That's a 95% success rate. I know you all have studied this issue for a year. I know we can every wonder, we love this town. I don't doubt that you're going to make a decision to hurt this town. I do believe that Franklin's death by social district is not based on actual evidence. We need to move forward and change in ways we can control. We can't let perfect be the enemy of good, and I think you are all taking a reasonable approach to this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Our next speaker is Lee Clor.
I was told I had an hour. First off, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for my opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Lee Clor. In short of my four years in the ring corps, I've been in Franklin here all of my life, so I come here to speak for my town as a longtime citizen. Second, I also own a travel tourism website that promotes the small towns from Murphy to Boone and the Smoky Mountains, North Carolina, so I love to see our mountain towns thrive. I am for the social district. I believe that it will contribute to tourism, and even locals will benefit and enjoy the opportunity. I've spoken to council members in both Clayton and Silva, the mayor of Silva, and Silva Economic Development Director. Sounds like you guys have also talked to me and them too. I am aware that some of the public would have one belief that having a social district where a person attending a designated event in a designated area carrying a designated cup with a beer or wine in it would turn Franklin into a public bar scene, that it would change Franklin fundamentally from the small charming town it is now. This is similar to when folks spoke out against alcohol sales in Franklin, approved back in 2006, but still in 2015, Franklin was awarded Best Small Town and then Best City to Live in North Carolina by the U.S. Chamber of Commerce in 2019. Franklin will not lose its small-town charm because a food truck or restaurants or brewery is selling adult beverage in the center of town. Franklin will not become a less desirable place to live or visit because someone is carrying a designated cup of beer or wine down the sidewalk. Tourism in Clayton and Silva has benefited from their social districts for nearly two years, and their small-town charms are still fully intact and even thriving without any incidents. I believe Silva's, I discussed Silva's social district with Ms. Peters, Town Bureau Economic Director, today in fact. Her calling the businesses owners in the downtown following its implementation is this. One, no incidents. Silva PD pulled data from 2019 as a baseline for downtown alcohol-related incidents to measure against when the district started in 2021. Since COVID would skew these results. No increases in alcohol-related calls. There has never been an alcohol-related call incident where the person was participating in the social district. She also said our town struggled with congestion in bars and restaurants. This has allowed merchants to have greater seat turnover, relieve congestion, and freeing up space for new customers, especially during heavy travel weekends, WCU game weekends, and during their events. Another point she made, retailers have seen more foot traffic from the social district. Main Street data shows that more movement creates more exposure and moves sales. When people were waiting for the table, they felt more free to walk down the sidewalks with a drink versus standing in front of the restaurant. Even at our event social spaces, she said, used to keep people from patronizing businesses, we see gaining a lot more merchant traffic during those events now, and our outdoor weekend concert sales is maxed out in attendance. Our largest festival has grown every year, and our Christmas parade saw the largest attendance ever. In 2023, the Silva Police Chief stated, "We checked statistics for the same timeframe last year, and there is no increase in police calls." He said, "I can tell you from policing here, we have not seen an uptick on anything in particular, not even alcohol-related." After its passage, I'm sure there are some who will not attend a few of these events or social districts in place. Once it's seen as safer and less controversial than they believe, I'm sure they'll return. Why do some people feel they need to have a drink as to, as they walk around an event or into a business to spend money, which is often greased by a little adult beverage? Just because they are adults and can? I don't believe it will lead to adults behaving badly like many others might believe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Clor.
Yes.
Our next speaker is Roger Schweitzer.
Very good. I have a family in Florida, and they can't, they come out of the swamp, stir in a family of techniques, and they don't get it right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I want it to be noted that I am in favor of the social district. I personally would have enjoyed a nice hot toddy at the Ruby Drop prior to, but there's only one thing that really concerns me with the social districting, and that's the definition of festivals. I've asked many people throughout here in the last month, not necessarily business owners, but just people, and they were all excited about a potential wine and cheese party or a festival, springtime flower festivals. One even told me a bicycle festival. I don't know what that means, but okay, here we go, right? But what concerns me down the road is if all these festivals happen, and then you get someone coming in here and saying, "We want an angry heavy metal band festival. We want a hip-hop artist festival to come in here." Now, no, they won't come in here and live, and only here for the weekend, but I have attended these things through my family business, and they can get pretty rowdy. And to think that Franklin is a small town that they won't come to, well, you have Greenville an hour and a half away, you have Asheville, Chattanooga, all these cities. So to say that they won't come here for a concert and get drunk, you know, college kids, 20-year-olds, something, I mean, we all, most of us were 20 at one point in time, right? So the point is, is I'm just, that's my concern, and it just doesn't deter the fact that I would like it, but maybe we need to study a little bit further down the road. What do we have in place if someone comes in here and says they want to put that angry heavy metal band in here, or a hip-hop artist coming in here to have a concert? And then what happens? The police? What are they going to do with that? Porta johns? Who's going to pay for all this stuff? See, that's where I'm a little concerned, but anyways, that's it, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is former Mayor Bob Scott.
I've been here more years than most of you people. I'm unemployed, and a lot of people are delighted over that, but I just want to say, and Madam Manager, I have a copy for the record. Thank you for holding a public hearing on this. It was needed because it's an issue within the community. I think you're making a mistake. You're offering a solution to something which was not a problem, a solution that's not been driven by data. The main reasons I've heard for social districting is other towns are doing it, and it sounds like a good idea. Ideas that sound good are not always sound, so they fail. There are 38 towns out of 520 doing it. Supporters point to Silva and Clayton, Georgia, and want Franklin to be like them. Every town has something in its makeup that others would like to imitate. That's just the nature of municipalities. Silva is a university town, and Clayton has a draw from wealthy residents, many who live in multimillion-dollar homes on Lake Raven, Scaly Mountain, and are from the Atlanta area. There are 38 local jurisdictions across the state that have districts. The only one in western North Carolina is Silva, and it is a college town. Waynesville and Murphy have turned it down. It was not an issue with them. This social distancing came about due to the pandemic. What it was intended to do was keep bars and restaurants open during the statewide lockdown. I remember it well, as I had to sign several lockdown measures, and it hurt me to have to do so, because it put some people out of business. Before you vote on this matter, consider a vote by the public or seek merchant input. Franklin does not need any conflict between Main Street or other merchants who may feel discriminated against. Families from throughout western North Carolina and our visitors love our festivals. They like them free of alcohol, as do most local residents. I have talked with them over the years, beginning back in 1967. Franklin has hosted wonderful alcohol-free festivals. Alcohol was never a part of the equation until the '80s flashback. I've attended the flashback. I liked it. It has grown, but it will survive without turning downtown Franklin into a social district. I never saw any indication that its success ended on alcohol, especially that great parade that they have every year, which is, was a sensational idea. It was well orchestrated and something for everyone, for a good cause. I have one other question here. Since alcohol will be permitted or allowed on town hall property, what about Memorial Park and the Whitmire property? Memorial Park has class reunions, club meetings, baby showers, and receptions. Some of them wanted alcohol, but it had been turned down. In closing, I ask you to put this issue to a vote of the town residents or allow individual festivals to petition the town council to allow alcohol in the same manner the festival promoters ask for street closings. Another thing I would suggest is to do away with the slogan "Discover Us." We've already been discovered. Change it to "Experience Franklin." We have something no other town has. We're not Silva, Clayton, or other cities in North Carolina. We're unique in many ways. Let us say that until proven wrong. Let Franklin be Franklin. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Our next speaker is Connie Stiles.
Honorable Mayor Horton, Vice Mayor Guppy, and Town Council, thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening. I'm going to first speak from personal experience. My personal experience with social districts that I have visited has been positive. The experience of my family and friends who have visited social districts has been positive. Nothing negative. I want to turn to research. In the very first place, to establish a social district in North Carolina, Kannapolis, alcohol is a small component of what's driving the increase in foot traffic. The social district has encouraged businesses to create programming, such as run clubs and local beat-ups. In Norwood, a small town of about 2,400, officials have seen a true nightlife experience develop in their small town, which is something that they had struggled to activate. Businesses are also working together to create programming and events to attract customers. Hickory pivoted from beer garden permits to social districting last March, if I remember my research correctly. There has not been an uptick in public disturbances or issues with security, and the feedback that town officials have gotten from the police department patrol staff is good, it's positive. Along the same lines, officials in Kannapolis and Norwood report no increase in issues. Social districts are more than just an increase in foot traffic. They seem to provide an incentive for businesses looking to open in municipalities that have established social districts. The social district is another tool to encourage revitalization in downtown, and to me, it seems that both business owners and property owners benefit from having a vibrant downtown. I support social districting. I hope you will too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stiles. Our next speaker is Betsy Base.
Yes.
I pronounced that correctly?
Thank you. Thank you. I don't know. I'm under oath. Good evening. My name is Betsy Base, and I want to thank you for asking for our opinions about this. I am a property owner in Franklin on Stillhouse Road. I'm also a former business owner. Many businesses my husband and I have owned together, and I am 100% for economic development. Economic development keeps communities alive. My father owned his store when I was growing up, and our Main Street was very, very vital to the community, and we had social district-type things there as well. It wasn't called the same thing, but it was very important for our community to keep businesses alive, to keep people bringing money to the community. I personally don't drink, and I support a social district. I think it's important with all of the events that are downtown and come to almost everyone, and, you know, at the Ruby Drop the other night, I saw plenty of people with hip flasks. Plenty of people pulling that out of their back pocket and licking around and taking a little sip. So, you know, why not make it something that is endorsed by the state of North Carolina? Something that, there's a framework already in place to take care of how to run this. The state ABC board monitors it frequently, if I remember what David said at the county commissioner meeting, and I learned a lot from your speech, so thank you for that. And I hope you vote to approve it, because I think it's good for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Base. Our next speaker is Sandy Heaton.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Heaton, and I just wanted to let you know that I live within two blocks of downtown Main Street, and I do support this, creating a social district. I think it would be great for our Franklin downtown, and I hope you will support it too. I am very grateful. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Scott Base.
You got it right twice in a row. County hasn't been able to do it yet, but we're getting there. Yes, I'm Scott Base, Betsy's husband, also a non-vinker, also in favor of the social district, and the only other thing I want to say is that I hope that the merchants embrace us as well, because we were at the Ruby Drop the other night, and very few merchants were open, and I think that's a missed opportunity. As somebody who's been a business owner before, it seems like a missed opportunity. Now, I don't know, maybe in the past, those things haven't panned out enough for them to remain open. That's up to them, but I would like to see the businesses, if we have a social district, take advantage of that.
Thanks, sir. Our next speaker is Amanda Harrell.
Good evening. For those that don't know me, I'm Amanda Harrell. I'm from City Clayton, City Council. I knew that Clayton was going to be thrown out there several times tonight, so I thought I'd come and speak to everybody of what we're doing and what we're seeing. I was also asked by four merchants that have businesses in Franklin, since I used to live here, to come speak, to kind of tell you, you know, how this can be a good thing. Mostly because not only will Reagan County poach your football players, but poach your merchants, where I said. Cutthroat in Reagan County. I was in your shoes two years ago, so I understand, you know, you're getting strong opinions from both sides, and it's very, it's a very hard and challenging decision to make. I'm completely in favor of it, of course, because...
Good evening. For those that don't know me, I'm Amanda Harold. I'm from City Clayton, City Council. I knew that Clayton was going to be thrown out there several times tonight, so I thought I'd come and speak to everybody of what we're doing and what we're seeing. I was also asked by four merchants that have businesses in Franklin, since I used to live here, to come speak, to kind of tell you, you know, how this can be a good thing. Mostly because not only will Reagan County poach your football players, but poach your merchants, where I said. Cutthroat in Reagan County. I was in your shoes two years ago, so I understand, you know, you're getting strong opinions from both sides. And it's a very hard and challenging decision to make. I'm completely in favor of it, of course, because of what's happened to Clayton. But what I do suggest is what we call the tiptoe approach. Basically, what Clayton has done is we're approving the social district on a case-by-case basis. Mostly, it has to promote the merchants. So, no concerts. We're not going to let concerts happen, and us doing open container for that. It can be 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. only. No Sundays, no Christmas party nights, because that's just too religious of a sanctity to try to do open container then. No alcohol, no liquor. No liquor drinks are allowed. For the merchants of the bars and restaurants that want to participate, they have to have a sign on their door, and it has to say "Social District, March 16th, 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. only." Then below it, it has a map of where it starts and where it begins. We then have the police presence at the corners, those four corners that stop people. Like, okay, you got to this point, what's in your cup? Dump it out. We have had no cases of public intoxication. We've had no arrests because of it. We've had no increase in police reports because of those nights. In 2023, we had four events where we had alcohol. It went great. Our merchants were excited, their sales were up. And that's what we really care about, is no city is having the same volume of sales as in the COVID days. 2020, 2021, retail numbers are gone. And so, our focus is what can we do to help keep promoting Clayton and our merchants and our visitors and even our employees, like the restaurant owners? What can we do to help them out? And so, we agreed to the case-by-case entertainment district for the case being. And it's coming up probably for discussion in the near future. And I hope that we don't have to see people show up to ours. I hope it's an empty night. But that is something. There was another question of what happens if people get drunk? Or what if there's liquor in the cups? Well, guess what? You go back to that restaurant owner and you say, hey, I heard that you were serving liquor. Do you understand we require your ABC license because of that? You have to hold the bars and restaurants responsible. The way we do it is you have to have a clear cup. It has a sticker on that cup. It has the restaurant name, and it has the date of that event. So, if they have one from a September event, and it's March, guess what? You're out, you know? So, that's how we kind of manage it. And it's been wonderful. Everyone has done it responsibly. There was the fear that, okay, well, you know, this is going to open it up. If you have Snapchat, I promise you, your residents are already drinking at these events. It's all over, like I see it, though I live in Clayton. I've also witnessed the flask being pulled out. So, you're having the drinks now. Why not just try to help ease that tension? What else? For anyone that's positive fear, I invite you to come to our block party March 16th from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. Come watch, come see, come see that there's not that just open drunkenness happening. It's done responsibly if you do it right. And, sorry, I have a whole bunch of notes. Again, I want to thank everyone that has come to Clayton to drink and to shop, because you're helping us have sales that colors. And we like these waffles, these waffles a lot. And, you know, I really want to see Franklin work, look flourish. Not as much as Clayton, but Clayton. So, I do think this is a good thing for y'all. But I do suggest doing right now for a year the case-by-case basis. And then after that, looking to do it year-round. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Harold. Our next speaker is Graham Norris.
Good evening. Mayor John Council, thank y'all for having us here. And I just want to thank everyone that's come in attendance for actually being able to have a conversation and have a discussion related to this social district. Most of y'all have heard my comments and a lot of things, so I'm not going to rehash all of those things. But I do want to address just a few of the concerns that I've heard and seen with some of the community members. If you look at what it might mean to Lazy Hiker as a business, you've heard me say that this is a negative to begin with. It is. If you think about the few things that we have to do in downtown Franklin right now, we're one of those main things. And if someone can sit there and have two or three beverages and then they leave, instead of coming to a concert where they might have one beverage and then move on their way, that's a negative for us on the short term. However, just like what we've seen in Silva, we know that that's a net positive in the long term, both for the town, for our county, and for us as a business involved with that town. We have experienced this for the past year and a half in Silva. We have a taproom in Silva, for those who don't realize that. And we are right downtown within the social district on Main Street. And as so many people have mentioned, there have been no issues, no concerns, no increased violations or anything like that. The liability that you see is still on the business owners. The liability is on our bartenders, on our owners, on us to make sure that we're still following the same laws. If they've gone down to innovation, or in Franklin, for instance, if they've been at gracious plates and then they come down to Lazy Hiker, we're still responsible for making sure that they are served responsibly and that they consume responsibly. It's just the same as right now. If they came from their house, if they came from the park, if they came from wherever they may have been, we still have a duty, and the liability is on us to make sure that we're serving them appropriately. And we have always taken that extremely seriously in Silva and in Franklin. When you look at the concern over family friendliness, I would encourage those who haven't been to either of our taprooms, to concerts at our taprooms, to concerts on the creek in Silva as part of this social district, and see the amount of families, the amount of children that are out and about and enjoying themselves, that are allowed to partake in this community atmosphere. When it comes to trying to not be like the towns around us, whether it's Silva, whether it's Clayton, I would encourage y'all to take a look at who's walking around downtown Silva and downtown Clayton on a regular basis, especially on the weekends. And you'll be pretty surprised to see the amount of Franklin locals that are in those towns, because they don't have the same opportunities here. Now, that's not just about a social district. A social district is a small piece of that. Just like Connie mentioned, a social district is one small piece of bringing more business to downtown, bringing more tourism to downtown. By having the social district, by encouraging businesses to be able to stay open, because, look, they actually see somebody walking past their business after 5 o'clock now, instead of going to Clayton, instead of going to Silva. Hopefully, you see that those businesses begin to stay open a little bit, begin to see what might come of it. Maybe that even encourages more businesses to come downtown. Maybe another restaurant or two, another permitted establishment or two that would allow more tourism dollars to flow into our town, as well as more local dollars to stay in our town. Some of y'all may remember that we kind of trialed this out with the town several years ago. COVID kind of messed everything up, just like it did with a lot of things. But for those of y'all who may remember, we rented out a private property, which is now Sloan Van Hook Attorney at Law. It used to be the old flower shop and stuff right across from First Baptist. We rented that property out for multiple festivals and worked with the town and the local ALE and the local police force to create a beer garden off-site for festivals. We were there for Pumpkin Fest, we were there for Winter Wonderland, we were there for July 4th, we were there for multiple different events. And we served only, is that my timer? I'm the first one to hit. We served only in that area, and people enjoyed themselves. They brought their kids into that area, they enjoyed themselves. And then they went on to patronize other businesses and other parts of the festivals. So, these things can and have already worked in Franklin. They can and have already worked in Clayton, in Silva, and in many other places. There's other things I could say, but my time's up, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Norris. Our next speaker is former council member Adam Kamsey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Town Council. I've got a really easy job here. Everybody pretty much said everything, so glad that I waited until the end. So, I'll try to touch on a few things. I did own a bar for nine years here in this town, served alcohol to, I wouldn't even begin to know how many people. 99, and I think this is unimportant. I think the idea that people who drink are inherently going to be problems, I think is a myth. 99% of people who drank within my establishment over those nine years were never a problem, whether they had one beer, three beers. I had no legal issues through my business. I'm pretty sure Police Chief Holland could attest to that. I don't think there's a single issue we ever had of our business for public drunkenness or any other issues. Because my primary concern was to protect my customers, not over-serve them if needed. That responsibility will still fall on these businesses. And secondarily, to protect my business from losing its alcohol license, which is my livelihood at that time. It would have been something I would have been in favor of as a business owner, because it would have driven business to my business. I have plenty of customers ask me, why can't I buy a beer, walk out to Pickin' on the Square, walk out to this festival, walk out to see these vendors? So, I do think that there's tourist and local interest in it, in my personal experience with people I've talked to over the years. I also think, I think it's kind of neat that somebody from Clayton came to speak, somebody from Silva's come to speak to us as a board, when I was on the board. You know, it is something that the state looked at a little bit before they even passed House Bill 890. And then we've been looking at it for honestly a few years at this point. I do think that a lot of research and time and effort's been taken to be looking at it. So, I do respect the idea that people want to wait and think about more things. But most of the detracting factors are not necessarily backed up by data, they're just more concerns and fears, which I respect. But I do think there's a lot of data that shows that this has been successful and has not caused an uptick in crime or issues through other municipalities that have passed it through the state. And then lastly, I'll speak to the only person who's not represented here. I'm just a citizen now. I like to come downtown and have a beer. Walk around and have a beer, and I probably won't get out of hand. And if I do, I'll probably pay some kind of fine, and then you guys made a little bit more money too. But I highly doubt that. So, I am in favor of the social district. I hope you will consider continuing with it and trying to get it passed through the benefit of Franklin as a district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kamsey. Our next speaker is Catherine Williamson.
Hey, thank you all for this opportunity to speak. I just love America, and I love that there's free speech. And I'm disappointed that I'm against the social district, and there are not more people here who feel that way. Maybe I'm just against the grain, and I think it's pretty clear that this is going to pass. But I just, Franklin, I love the way Franklin is, and people will disagree with me here, but it's just a wholesome town. And there's nothing wrong with alcohol, there's nothing wrong with beers, nothing wrong with... I just think it belongs in a restaurant, in a bar, you know? It just belongs inside. And I'm just one person who just says, I just, I don't even know if I can even speak anymore, because I just think it's pretty clear that there's so many good arguments about why the town should have this. And I'm all pro-business, oh my gosh, I'm not against business. But I just think sometimes it's really good to go against the grain of what everyone's doing. And I don't think we have to be like everyone else. I think that's one of the reasons it makes us special. We're just kind of old-fashioned, like a little Hallmark town. And I know people who've lived here long enough that I have know that that is not true. But it has that feeling. And I just, I'm just going to go on the record to say that I just am against it. Not against business at all, but I'm just against this idea. Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you. Those were all the folks we had signed up to speak on this issue. Is there someone who came in who didn't have a chance to sign up?
Yes, please.
If you did, would you please come forward, give us your name?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to allow small businesses to speak on this. Thank you so much for your deliberation on all this. I think it's very respectful of everyone involved. And I'm also excited about this whole thing, because it's kind of bipartisan. It's a beautiful thing. I've seen people like agreeing on this from both sides of the aisle locally. But I'm speaking on behalf of Alarka Expeditions. I'm the first female ECO Tours operator in the history of Macon County. And I deal in safety. My job is to get people in and out of nature without getting hurt. And I have some really good insurers that back me up on that. But being a nervous Nellie, knock on wood, and everything else, I've been very lucky that none of my clients have fallen into harm's way. One of the things that I think would be a wonderful plus for my ECO Tours business is to be able to tell clients that are visiting here from out of town and far-flung places, or even just close by places, why don't you tip up for the night in one in our town after you go on a river tour with me, or after you go on a hike with me, you go on a foraging tour with me? And why don't you stay the night in Franklin? Where you'll be safe. And maybe you don't want to drink and drive. Because I would say 99% of my clients have a little drink after they've been down the river with Angela F. Martin. The ones that are of age. And I love, love, love the thought of selling that to my clients, where you can walk back to your room and be safe with all the wonderful business owners that are going to be looking out for you here in town. I just think it'll be a beautiful thing. I don't think it's going to take away from the family aspects of our town whatsoever. I think we have a lot to offer families, and none of that's going away. And I look at it as a safety issue, I really do. There are a lot of places within the city limits that my clients stay. I send a lot of my clients to Yonder's Airbnb and all the other Airbnbs and the local motels. And the thought of them being safe through their own journey to visit nature with me and the best that Macon County and Franklin has to offer, let's face it, is the nature that surrounds us. I want their whole journey to be safe and enjoyable. And thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Is anyone I missed? If not, those are all the speakers we had signed up to speak on this particular issue. I will then therefore close the public hearing. Does the council wish to take any action concerning this issue tonight?
I make a motion to approve it.
Pardon?
I make a motion to approve it.
Approve what?
The social district.
Well, it takes more than that. You'd have to start the process. You can't just automatically get it. It takes somewhere in the neighborhood, correct me if I'm wrong, John, six months?
So, I think the process from an action to adopt an ordinance, and I don't think it's out of order to adopt an ordinance whenever you're ready to, is that then the map that you're adopting as part of the ordinance is filed with the state ABC commission? As I understand, I don't know how long, there's a sort of a filing process along with that. It's not an approval process, it's more like registration? So, I think that it's effectively approved at that point, and I think their receipt of your registration is probably sufficient to begin an operation.
Part of what we have to do if the process moves forward is we have to provide the state with a copy of what our logo was going to look like downtown. We have to provide the state with our education plan for the citizens and visitors, our approved map with all of the boundaries indicated, with the particular signage that we have. So, that has to still be developed. We've worked on getting the ordinance crafted, but there's still another component to it. And then all of that goes to the state, and then the state essentially blesses it, and we can move forward.
And what does my motion need to say? I think adoption of the ordinance and the map that's been presented is the next step. I don't think it makes any sense to ask, you know, there's nobody to ask, because there isn't... I guess that's what I'm saying, Mr. Mayor, is there's not permission given. I think you have to register all of the things that are part of it.
They approve the packet of information, just like they do for an ABC license for an individual. individual vendor.
So we vote to approve or disapprove, and then we inform them?
Correct.
We just inform them of what we're doing?
But to Amy's point, she's right, is that the logo, you know, part of this is you have to have a logo for what the signage is going to be, it's got to be on the cups, the clear sixteen-ounce, somewhere sixteen-ounce cups that are permitted to be used. I think you have to develop that, because that's not...
Yes, we haven't moved forward with that, because we were waiting to determine what next steps would be.
I just think there's not a petition to rather just say, hey, let us do this. You are the authority that gets to say whether or not you're going to have this ordinance adopted.
So the motion needs to, so we can have discussion?
Yes.
The motion should be a motion to adopt the ordinance and the map.
Have we got an ordinance?
Yes, it's in practice.
I'll second that, but then I have a couple of comments for the discussion part.
So the motion for Mr. Goffey is to adopt the ordinance to start the process, correct? Mr. Culpepper, second the motion?
Yes, sir. My discussion's regarding the map. I think that we should try to get, I haven't actually looked at the updated map, but as per the previous, last month, we should get the alleyways involved, and we should also get the road behind the potential hotel connected to that alley, behind the bank, behind Outdoor 76. I think that area should be in the social district as well. It is, but you can ask them if they want it to be in the social district, and they can say, yeah, your name.
Yeah, and private property can be included.
You're the lawyer.
Could it be added later?
You can amend that, yes, and all you do is resubmit to...
The map.
After working with private property owners, yes, I think we should, we should try to make it to where it doesn't just dead-end at an alley and, you know, kind of encompasses some areas that probably need to be encompassed in the future.
You know, if we were to go with this experiment, I mean, that's basically what it would be, the board would have the right to adopt, the board would have a right to reject. And I have not really felt that there was enough components in town presently to justify the mechanism that it would take to pull it all together. But I don't know that, and I'm certainly, apparently, there's a willingness to try it, knowing that the same board, if, after it gets implemented, if it's voted in, could take another look at it and say, maybe it is not for us. But I really, as my background, I think I'm one of the ones, the closest besides the mayor, to being against it. I can't believe it. But I feel like that it's an opportunity that maybe its time has come, because again, us or a future board could make, you know, decisions as they go to tweak it, or oust it, or whatever.
Does the board feel like they've had enough input from the people who will be affected by this to make a decision tonight?
I certainly do. I mean, we've heard from business owners at a couple of meetings, and I've talked with people who vote in this town and pay taxes in this town. I mean, we've had this on the agenda for long enough to gather up information, in my opinion.
I have a couple of comments.
Mr. Goffey.
I have a confession, I spent money in Clayton yesterday. But I spent most of it in a local merchant business, so...
That local merchant loves our social district, just like you.
I appreciate everybody speaking, and I especially appreciate the comments about the character of our town, because it's important. My family's been here for generations, and Franklin's a special place to me, and I can assure you that if we, if we thought that one of our letter writers said that it would turn into the OK Corral, I can assure you I'd be against it. And as Mr. Collins says, if we get down the road and this thing's not a right fit for Franklin, I can guarantee you, it'll be back here again. So I understand the concerns, but I think that the time for this has come, and I think that it's sort of a chicken and an egg thing, Joe, about whether there's enough businesses right now to make it work. I think what we've seen from what we've heard from Silva, and from Clayton, and the other Minneapolis, is that we've looked at through this process, that this may be something that spurs more business development downtown.
I'd like to comment too, if I might. I'll wax poetic for a second to address some of what everybody said. I love this town, born and raised here. That being said, Franklin's not a prop. I mean, it's, it is a Hallmark town, it's picturesque, but it's not just a place I want somebody to come and take a picture on our square, because it's pretty, and then go home. At the Ruby Drop at the 9:00 PM the other night, it was a line of people trying to get out of town as fast as they could after the Ruby Drop. I don't want to be a prop town. I want to be a town that has young people that live here and are out and about, and help our businesses thrive. I want a hospital that opens up a delivery ward again, because it's justified. I want young people in this town. I don't want to just be a picture. I want to be a real town that has different demographics, not just retirees. We desperately need young people in this town. We need professional people, and we need people having kids here. This is not the silver bullet to that. This is a step in the right direction. It's a tool in the toolbox that can help downtown become the downtown we all want it to be.
Anyone else?
Mayor, I do want you to know that prior to anything going to the state, everything will come back to this council for you to review, look at, approve, and so that we're ready to move it to the state when it becomes time to do so. This will not be decisions made without you. So I just did want to make sure that you understand that before it's submitted to the state, it will come back to you for review once again.
As Councilmember Collins said, that besides himself, that the mayor was probably not in favor of this, that's me. I understand the comments, I understand the reasoning that people have for it, and I have other reasons that I don't feel comfortable doing it, but you'll know that under our rules of procedure, the mayor does not get to vote unless there's a tie. But if there was a tie, I would not be voting for it. I want you to know that upfront. So I think that this is, one of the points I think was well-made was that Silva has it, Clayton has it, so-and-so has it. That's good, if they want it. Some decided they didn't want it. Waynesville, for example, Murphy's another one. I, I'm kind of like the guy who had the sign out in front of his business that says, I wasn't born here, but I got here as soon as I could. And I think a lot of people in this room are the same way. I would like, I would hate to see the culture, culture and the character of our town changed because of this one particular issue. And so I thought that it's really important for me to let you know how the mayor stands on this, and if I am allowed to vote, you know how I'll be voting. So with that, is there any other comments?
Yeah, I have a comment and then a question. I just, about the culture changing in Franklin, as somebody whose family's been here for generations, you know, our, our culture's changing almost daily. And there are things about it that I wish I could stop, but I'm afraid that I can't. But there are other things that have made Franklin a better place, and I think we have to move forward. My question is, we had one concern about the kind of events that would be happening in Franklin, and I thought maybe you could speak to the approval process that we already have in place in terms of events.
We do already have a process in place, whereas individuals who wish to have an event, they come and they meet with me to discuss the event, what their particular needs might be, any street closure requests that they may have. Using the gazebo, for example, that still has to be approved. And then all that information comes back to the town council. So in advance of that, we try to screen as closely as we can to make sure that it does fit with Franklin's ideal of what types of festivals and events we want to have here, especially in the downtown area.
And there's discussion too, that there's nothing about special events that changes what the social district legally allows. It's still sixteen-ounce cups, you can serve two years to one patron at a time, no more than that. I mean, it's law. It's not like an event comes and then it's, you know, unlimited consumption.
And as part of the application process for closing a street, if the social district is in place, we can modify that application to say, would you like to suspend the social district during your event? Yes or no? Then it comes back to you as town council to determine whether or not you approve or deny that request.
One of our council members said something that stuck with me. He said, do the best you can for everyone, but try not to harm anyone. I think that's what this board is trying to figure out how to do. And our motto, and my motto has always been, we're here to serve the public, public service in the public interest, and that's what we're trying to do. We may not always agree, but in the end, I'm hoping that we come to that point where the decisions made by this council is in the public interest. Any other comments? If not, we have a motion and a second on the floor to adopt the resolution proceeding with application toward creating a social district in the greater downtown area of Franklin. We're hearing, with no other discussion, all those in favor of that motion, please signify it by raising your hand. Opposed by a like sign, that motion carries, and we'll proceed from that point. Thank you all for being here, thank you for your comments. We'll take a five-minute break before we reconvene. We're back in regular session now. The next item on the agenda is a call for a public hearing. I'd like to refer to our town planner, Mr. Justin Setser, for comments and information on that concerning a proposed public hearing for rezoning. Mr. Setser.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, back in, all the way back in July of 2023, this current rezoning was, after a hearing that night of that large rezoning that we had back in July, this is what we've been calling EZCA, which is area around Cherry Street and Second Street, was, Town Council, you had asked, Platoon Board to review it. Platoon Board reviewed it for five months, actually four months, one that ended in November. But for months they reviewed it, and then they sent it back down. It was originally thirteen parcels, it has grown to twenty-two parcels that they have recommended for rezoning from R2 to R1. And in your packet, you'll see the maps, the original, where it was mostly Second Street and some of Cherry, and then you can see the highlighted parcels that they suggested that would be, now be R1 from R2. And then you can also find staff reports and filing facts and constituency statements that they answered in your package.
So you're asking for the board to go ahead and set a public hearing for February 5th at 6:05 PM, or as closely their effort to receive public input on these potential rezonings. Is that correct?
Yes, that's the will.
Is there a motion concerning that?
No.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second is made, any discussion? Here are none, all those in favor, please signify it by raising your hand. Any opposed by a like sign? That motion, that we're hearing will be advertised and published for our next meeting in February, February 5th at 6:05. Next item on our agenda is a public session input, and first citizen we have speak at public comment is Norrell Kirkman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board of all the members. It's time for that dreaded part of the evening where the pop quiz is presented. Do any of you remember the sawmill run by Grady where Siler Road, Farm Road began? It's where Walgreens now is.
Yeah.
I'm getting a lot of blank stares.
Yeah.
Do any of you remember the photograph that I made that was put in the Macon Shopping Guide approximately 2004? It showed Depot Street Extension, brand-new, still touched with mist. That's the way most of us think about Franklin. Even if we live here and know the reality, it's still a cherished mess of memory. But if you go along Route 28 toward Bryson City, before you get to Sanders Town, you have that spectacular view, both east and west, of Goat Mountain and Cowee, and then of course, all the Wyatt complex. That has been sullied by Paul Pachetti and his real estate company. A building is now sitting on that. So what used to be untraveled is no more. It has forced me to bring to the commissioners the idea, the residents of Macon County and particularly Franklin, need to have a chance to see nature and the mountains like the tourists do. We get so busy with our everyday lives, we forget the chance to show our kids how beautiful our county is. So I have proposed, and Paul Higginen has grabbed onto this, that the commissioners, in concert with you all, approach Phil Drake and find one of his current bluffs in that brand-new development that he opened this year, last year for sale, and set it aside for Macon nights, to go and have barbecues, picnics, it might be a good venue even for July 4th. But it's a place where residents get to see the view untrammelled. Phil Drake did a beautiful job in his development. He also has an upper tier that I think may be a little bit too much, but he has a middle tier where the driveway is a cul-de-sac, there are hills that hide it from the development behind it. It's also protected from the overhead power lines, and the view of Albert Wyatt is just spectacular. So if you all could designate someone to coordinate with Paul Higginen, and then the three of you, whether it's Joe or Rhea, Stacey, go to Phil, and the initial objective objection of the commissioners was, oh, we don't want to put money down. Well, Phil is a very influential Christian person. He may not need money to motivate him. So please don't let that be blockage.
Thank you, Norrell. We had no one else sign up to speak at public comment?
Excuse me, I've got to...
So we'll close the public session and move to item number nine. Proposed lease with the Raskeller, Attorney Hining and Town Manager Owens. Please bring us up to date.
Well, at your November the 6th meeting, you instructed the county attorney to draw a lease agreement for the property, very similar to the one that we had with the former group barrel, illustrating a specific space available. They wish to do a food truck. I know they have been in discussions with the Health Department regarding that. It has been advertised properly in advance of this, lease is included in your packet. So essentially, it's up to you as to whether or not to move forward with this particular request.
Anyone have any questions?
Motion to approve lease with the Raskellers.
We have a motion for Mr. Lewis to approve the lease. Is there a second?
Second.
A second? Thank you, Mr. Culpepper. Discussion? Here are none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Any opposed by a like sign? The motion carries. Under new business, we have a request for a street closure for Big Bear Lane, beginning at 3:00 PM on March 22nd, at 5:00 PM. for Big Bear Lane, beginning at 3:00 PM on March 22nd, at 5:00 PM, uh, March 23rd, for the unveiling of the Sewing the Seeds of the Future Sculpture and Celebration. Been a long time coming.
Motion to approve street closure.
We had a motion.
Second.
Had a motion to second to approve. Any discussion? Here are none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Any opposed by like sign? That motion carries. Thank you all. Looking forward to that date. Firefighting apparatus. Town manager will bring us up to date on the, our efforts to try to replace two badly needed fire trucks. So Ms. Owens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the fire chief is here. We have additional questions. We did send out the RFP initially and only received two vendors responding. We had to resend it out, but the second time, we received three respondents. There is a truck committee through the fire department that reviewed the proposals that were submitted. There was one of the three that met all of the requirements that was in the RFP, and that vendor is Melton Fire Group that provides toing, fire apparatus. All bid information is in your packet. You can see the bids from the three. In order for us to move forward with any type of purchase for a fire truck, we have to have approved vendor with an amount so that we know what we would be financing, as well as what we need to submit to the local government.
This is a state requirement.
Correct. We can't just pick numbers and say, oh, it's going to be 1.2 million. We have to have concrete numbers.
You have to have a vendor, a vendor that meets your specifications and qualifications in a solid number that they won't change before you go to financing, because I don't think we have enough money in our account to write a check for this. Is that right?
You are correct. I would love to say yes, but we do not.
Any questions, Ms. Owens?
Mr. Culpepper requested a copy of the fire district map. If you all have it from you.
So this is, is this a necessary step? Whether or not the town contributes at all to the purchase of fire trucks?
It is necessary, because by the time that any fire apparatus is received, it's two and a half years. 825 days is the approximate contract.
You can't go to the next step until you do this step first.
Yeah.
This is the city and this is the fire district.
There's the current, this is the city limits. That's the fire district right there. Four, five, five or six mile district there.
I want us to get a new fire truck, but I still have severe heartburn of putting town of Franklin residents, funding the extra amount when the fire district is so large outside of just the town of Franklin.
If I understand you correctly, if I'm wrong, basically what the fire department is asking for is help on the down payment, $200,000. Is that correct?
Yes.
And the intent is to pay the debt service on the financing through the fire fees?
Absolutely. With, if we're able to put 50% down, it would save us approximately $55,000. So with $200,000 from the town, we would put up the remaining 240, wherever thousands from our fund balance to get that discount. That leaves us with a debt service that we can manage through the life of the debt service.
And this is again without anything from the county?
The county gave us, uh, two years ago when we got the.
Oh, yeah. I remember that.
Right. Half percent of the fire tax increase for good fire apparatus.
Well, this is not a vote tonight to pay in addition to what you get from the fire tax, apparently. I mean, that's not what we're voting for tonight. We're only voting to keep a door open.
We have to pull a vendor before we can move forward to discuss other options, to say, you know, we've got this much for a down payment. Move forward, you know? In order to enter into any kind of negotiation to see if we can potentially lower the costs or anything like that, we have to approve a vendor.
For the limited purpose on that, I wouldn't object. I do agree, I think with David, though, that I do not want to set a precedent of subsidization, which would in the end, I feel like just make the fire tax that much lower, knowing there was a town to take care of the difference.
It's an issue we're going to have to broach, and I don't like it either.
But this apparently, if this is a necessary step to just to keep the discussion alive.
If you don't, if you don't do this step, you, there's no way you can, you, as, as the chief and as the manager said, to buy a fire truck takes two and a half years to get it. Even if you had the money to write the check for it right now, it'll still take you two and a half years to get it. But if you don't do, if you're going to finance it, which is what the original intent was, you have to take this step first before you can go to the next step, which would be, you still have to get approval from the local government commission before you can finance anything.
But is it not asking in the same cover sheet for the $200,000?
Without the $200,000, we cannot afford a fire truck. Last year, when we priced this truck, it came in at about $600. Now it's at $800. There was no way we could predict that kind of thing.
If the vote includes a commitment of $200,000, now if it does, that's a horse of a different color.
The cover sheet is just to select the vendor at this point. We have to be able to enter into contract negotiations and things like that. At some point in the near future, we will need to know whether or not the town is going to appropriate additional funds for the fire.
If you're going to go forward with it, tonight's only action is to approve the recommended vendor?
And I'm all for approving the recommended vendor, but this is a conversation that does need to happen, because I believe, Chief, that we need a new fire truck. And we've got to find a way to pay for it. But again, our fire district touches Jackson County. It goes a mile past the airport entrance. It goes a mile out Rose Creek Road. It covers the entirety of North Blaine Branch Road way out in Patton Valley. This is a huge district that is way bigger than just the town of Franklin itself. And I don't think it's fair to put it directly on just the town residents. We need our district to pay responsibly towards our district's trucks. That's all I want to say. I want to get a new fire truck, and I want to figure out how to do it. I don't want the burden to be on just the town taxpayer. The town taxpayers already gave a parking lot a couple of years ago to get the substation. So I mean, the town taxpayers have already subsidized the Franklin Fire Department. We're the board of directors, apparently, for the Franklin Fire Department. We are not the purse string holders for the Franklin Fire Department. The county is that. The county sets our fire tax, and we need our fire tax to be in line with our needs. So if we need $200,000 for a fire truck, we got to figure out a way to get $200,000 actually from a fire truck that encompasses the entirety of our fire district doing that. And if that involves.
You have to remember, Mr. Culpepper, everyone who lives in town is in the fire district.
I understand that, yeah. And I pay double taxes for living in town, and I'm okay with that.
Well, you don't pay double taxes on fire. You just pay the fire taxes. If you lived in town or outside of town in the same fire district, you'd pay the same amount of money.
If you, if you live in the town and the town subsidizes the purchases of a truck, you pay it twice.
If you're subsidizing it through town funds, that's different.
That's right.
And we can't, because the way the fire tax is set up, we can't charge a different rate for those who live in town compared to those who live outside.
And we're not supposed to. The district, the district is what we're talking about. This is a fire district. They are charged a fire tax rate that should correspond with what they need to pay to cover the district. That includes fire trucks. So we need this district to pay for the fire trucks. It just so happens that the town council is the board of directors for the Franklin Fire and Rescue Department. We are also the purse string holders of our general fund and of the COVID funds. An accountant looking at this objectively would see these are two separate things. Just like our water and sewer fund is not to be touched to use things that the general fund is supposed to be for, and the general fund is not supposed to be used for things in the water and sewer fund. These two things too need to be separated, and it can be sorted, and we can get it figured out. But the first thing to do is again to notify the people who are in charge of our fire district tax rate. Our fire district tax rate is not enough to cover our necessities. That needs to be clear to the county commissioners, because they are the ones in charge of that. If we as a town need to front the fire department $200,000 and get paid that back over a certain amount of time with an increased fire tax rate from the fire district, that's a conversation we can have. But I want to keep the two things separate and clear that these are two separate funds. That being said, if this is a motion to kick this thing forward and we need to do it to go for the future, then I make that motion, but I don't include the $200,000 to be used.
So the only motion that you're making is a motion to award the vendor, not, not to actually buy it, but to award it, the RFP to the vendor, which meets the qualifications, and it does, doesn't have anything to do with appropriating any town funds at this point. Correct, Mr. Cuffey?
I second the motion.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation. Any other discussion? Here are none. All those in favor of the motion?
If we get this sorted out and we can increase the fire tax rate on this district, that will be healthy for Franklin Fire and Rescue going forward in the future.
You mean if they can increase the fire district?
Well, they is us. I mean, it, they're.
They is the county commissioner.
They are commissioners, though. And if we tell, okay, then as a board of directors, we can advocate for them to increase it, right?
And the fire chief and I have been.
We've done that.
No, we haven't. We, we.
Yes, we have. We were there this year in the budget.
Timeout, timeout.
Budget session, yeah, they were there.
This board, that is the board of directors also for Franklin Fire and Rescue, has never made a motion or never made a, a, a appeal as a board to the county commissioners to increase that Franklin fire tax.
This board instructed the, the fire chief and the town manager to appeal to the county commissioners in this last budget cycle to raise the tax rate enough to satisfy the debt service requirements on two trucks.
Yes, but we never actually, as, as the board for Franklin Fire and Rescue, we never voted to send them. We want this to happen. We never advocated for it. We sent Amy in chief to do it. We didn't do anything as a board for it. We could make a formal recommendation that they raise our tax rate if we want to.
Not until next year.
Call the question.
You only get one chance a year to do that, and this year is gone.
Yeah.
So thank you for making that motion, Mr. Culpepper. I appreciate your comments as usual and your insight. He's a good businessman. That's why he's been so successful.
Hey, you.
Any other comments or questions?
I will say that in municipalities I've worked in and in surrounding municipalities, because the fire district tax typically is not enough to sustain the fire department, the general funds either supplements employees or supplements capital projects, and those are one-time capital purchases. That's just been my experience. That's just something for your consideration. But you can use general fund money to support the fire department as opposed to water sewer, which is an enterprise utility.
Fire department is not an enterprise fund. Any other comments, questions?
I, no, I, I just want to make the comment that you're right about the district and the burden that they share. But I also don't want $200,000 standing in the way of us getting a fire truck. We keep delaying this and delaying it and delaying it. The price is going to go up, and it's going to be never when we get a fire truck. Sometimes you've got to be the big boy in the room before you bridge it up and do it. And if it's a matter of doing it and then going back to the county next year and saying, look, we pulled our extra weight and doing it officially as a board and saying y'all need to, y'all need to raise the tax so that people are paying for the service they get, then I'm all for that.
Thank you for your insight, Mr. Cuffey. Anyone else?
I will say the truck that we have designed, I mean, as you're all aware, there's a vast difference in our community from the rule to municipal district. This truck is set up as a municipal fire truck. Its primary response will be municipality. The only times it will leave the district is from wreck on the highway and some sort of commercial fire in our rural district. It will primarily start with citizens of our town.
We have a motion and a second. And?
The last, I know Joe called the question off. When will we have to decide about the 200? That'll be next month?
We need to decide.
Yeah.
Possibly every tree.
Okay.
There's a lot of pencil sharpening between now and then, I hope.
Not much. Yeah, because the down payment is to help defray another, I mean, the $57,000 or something like that that we get as a discount, and that would be the down payment, and that, that is relatively soon.
That's, the price that they quoted on their RFP is the price now. If you don't do it now, the price may be $200,000 or more in six months. They're not going down, are they?
No, sir.
And getting the contract does allow us to negotiate certain things. It allows us to go back to the truck committee and say, are there things that we might be able to modify?
Right.
Call the question.
We had a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please take a proper raise your hand. Any opposed by like sign? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, for hanging with us.
Budget calendar. Speaking of money. Amy, budget calendar for this year?
Yes, sir. In front of you are proposed budget calendar for Seings Crazy State, 24, 25.
Anybody want to make, anybody want to make any adjustments to that?
That's it.
If not, if not, is there a motion to adopt the budget calendar for 2024? Thank you, Mr. Cuffey. Second?
Mm-hmm.
Motion second. Any discussion? Here are none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That motion carries unanimously. Departmental reports. Our distinguished finance director, Sarah Bishop.
I was told by my counterparts in the back that I have to stand up.
Yeah. We can't hear you from over there, so.
It will take me longer to walk up here, get back, and to give you a report.
Five minutes.
I don't, my department doesn't get to do fun things like Justin. I'm sure he's going to have a brilliant report for you guys in a few minutes. But we are preparing all of our year-end stuff, so W2s, 1099s are going out. Things that we have to do. Our department is also working with Nicole to do the Affordable Care Act reporting that we have to do for health insurance. We used to contract that out, so we're saving the town about $5,000 a year by doing that in-house now. Went really well last year, so I'm full of confidence that it's going to go well again this year. The written response that you guys signed for me last month at the board meeting for our audit finding was accepted by the LGC. So our corrective action is already going to put in place. All is well. Other than that, we're preparing for budget. You've approved our calendar for us. Thank you for that. Amy and I will start working on revenue projections after the retreat, after we get more guidance from you guys. So this is when we start pulling our hair out. That's all we've got going on.
Anybody have a question for Sarah? Good job. Keep up the good work. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you for bringing my Gasky contract as well, but I don't want to talk about Gasky.
Now the director of planning and information technology, Mr. Justin Setser.
This better be thrilling.
It's a riveting.
I know. I laid the groundwork.
Yeah, I think that's just really riveting. Um, yes, it's been a busy past couple of months. I'm passing out. I've done this every year, just because I do building permits on calendar year. It's not what, these are not the numbers that you see when you'll do your budget. You'll see building permits. But you can see where we've, since 2015, when I started tracking building permits or land development permits, state of the house, numbers went up on permits. In 2015, we had 19 permits, and then just any, the other day in 2023, we had 52 permits. But that's everything from build new houses, additions, people will put a shed in their backyard, to new commercial businesses, the, the new charging stations that are going to be in front of big lots, you know, that kind of stuff. And then there's signed permits, which have always kind of, they just bounce around. You can't really track those. Some years there'll be, there'll be a lot, and other years are not. We're not talking a lot of money, but it's interesting to see those. That's tracked up a little bit over time. So over the past couple of months, back in October, our downtown, we talked about this when we started the process of the hotel, the idea of creating a historic district. We hired a consultant. They created a documentation and presented it to the North Carolina Historic Preservation Office, or NCHPO. That was presented to that, their office in October. Our downtown district was approved for the study list, which then will potentially be a national nomination. which then will potentially be a national nomination. They tell me it'll take a year. I mean, it's very good, too. We're hoping maybe we can speed that up, because they only hear it twice a year. So, we've got to get working on it pretty quick. But probably hear some more about that coming down the pipe here in the next few months as we start looking at that. The building housing projects, we've reached out to some contractors on those two houses that we've talked about. We've got one proposal. Was hoping to get us some more to sit before we can come back to council. The one house wasn't that expensive, but the other one, the one proposal was just over Amy's threshold, so we'll probably be back to you all for that, so. If it gets to that point, still hoping maybe some things will move with that. The downtown Wi-Fi project is moving along. Hopefully, work will begin this month on getting the Wi-Fi antenna set up on downtown. We've run into a little snag with due power on some rules on the light poles and some attachment fees that we didn't anticipate. So, we're kind of navigating through that. That becomes an issue. We might have to go between some property owners just to defer to attachment, because many of them just got out of power. Crawford Branch Greenway, we've been meeting. We've had steering committee meetings, stakeholder meetings with a couple of stakeholders, visited the route. We've got some constraints in some interesting areas, especially trying to get that, navigate that route, find the best plan where it's not, trying not to be, don't want to veer too far from the Crawford Branch, but trying to make it where we can have a route that's not real constrained and tight and unsafe for people wanting to walk. The areas like around United Community Banks, kind of an interesting area that we've got to figure out some stuff around. We've also hired traffic planning design through our, if you remember back, earlier in the year, we got a grant from NCDQ. It was a tag grant. And that's a study there around the Indian mound for, it's kind of like a road diet, on-street parking, road noise, potentially closing, rerouting, making Big Bear Lane maybe one way, which will help with the statue down there and some on-street parking, maybe closing the Quasi Lane for some future stuff around the mound. Working with them, they're working on that same project. That's the same contractor that's doing our Greenway project, so using the same vendor for both projects. In March, coming up in March, you'll have the dedication of our Sowing Seeds, the Future Sculpture down by the river. If you'll notice, construction has started down there. Richard Clark's company is doing the pad and the walkway and landscaping around it right now. So, that'll be, I think it's March 25th is the date.
24th, I think.
One of those days. I haven't even-
Somewhere around there.
I don't have a thing off the top of my head.
I'm telling.
So, there's still fundraising still for some of the landscaping that's wanting to be done down there. Obviously, everybody's noticed the crosswalks are finished on Main Street. We've got some new bullouts, some planters in it. You'll see those filled this spring with some flowers and some grass and probably some year-long stuff, but we'll do that all at one time. So, they're not taking, or just not there all winter. We'll have some grass in them for most of the year. But with that, we're also, I know there's probably some talk about parking, what we're going to do about parking on Main Street, because, you know, we took out a parking, or an angled crosswalk. Myself and Bill Dill, coworkers, we've met. We've got a plan to grind and re-strut the angled parking on the south side, where it's still angled, and some of the parallel on this side of Main Street. And our message is that we can add us a 40-foot load zone here in front of the EMS building and re-strut the parking that we have now with the same degree and angle and everything, and we can actually gain four parking spots. We'll keep the same number of handicap spots that we have now. There's four on Main Street, but those are going to have to be moved around and be made ADA compliant. Like there was one right in front of the alley where you would go down to where April's is. It was on the right-left side of the crosswalk. The new one will now be on the right side for access, because we lost that spot because of the bullouts and the planters. So, that'll be exciting. We'll add some parking on Main Street. And then the only thing looking forward in 2024, it's been seven years since we did our Michael Walk Franklin Plan. It's seven years old. NCD, as you recommend, about every five years, you update those. Those come open every year, those grant programs, so that might be something that bring before council, if something, we talk about retrieval if you want. That's a matching grant. I think it's an AD20 matching grant, to maybe upgrade our walk. Any questions?
Any questions?
I hate to be over and over and over, but the demolition, what are you saying we're waiting on now for the demolition?
Hoping to get another quote other than one vendor. All I have is a quote from one contractor right now. Hoping to get another, at least another quote, so I can bring it back. Because the one come in at $30,000.
For both houses?
Number one house. So, I'm hoping maybe to get another, some more quotes, just to see how we work out on that.
How will we get other quotes? We just call around to people that tear down houses?
Yeah, we can do a formal, we haven't done a formal RFP. We've called people that do that, so we might have to do a formal RFP. Getting in that realm of money.
We get the fire department to burn them down and give them $40,000, and then we're getting somewhere. The fire department says it's too dangerous.
I said they can't do it. We talked about that. I thought that'd be a quick way to do it, too.
That's good. Hey, you were doing good up to now.
Any more questions for Mr. Sessor? Mr. Sessor and I had the opportunity to sit down with Dr. Gordon Mercer this past month and do a radio program called Citizens Making a Difference. You'd be surprised at the number of people that listen to that at 8:00 on a Saturday morning. But Mr. Sessor did a terrific job telling people, telling folks what was going on in our town, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Last but not least. Good evening, Capitol mayor. If you all had a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. So, what I did, and I kind of did it for myself, too, so I can see if I want to show you as well. I picked the year previous to COVID, that we were full staffed and everything was normal. Take the pair to 2023, 2022, just to kind of see our, how our staffing and calls were related. So, I made a pretty little packet with the pretty shiny police car on the front of it. The second page. So-
I know where that's at.
The second page is the annual enforcement report, which just included arrests and citations where we enforce charges statute. As you can see, the arrests are similar in numbers for 2019, 2022, 2023. And those type of, the arrests are mostly a call or complaint oriented, where we go to the call and the arrest results out of that. As you see in the green, that's the citations issued, and that's more of a proactive approach that officers take in when they issue a citation. And as you can see, it almost went to half for '22 and '23, which I attribute that to our low staffing, but they're still out there doing what they can. So, the next page shows our calls that have been logged through dispatch. So, most of everything we do is logged through our Leck County Dispatch Office. And as you can see, most, or what I did was pick the four highest calls that we do in a year, which would be traffic stops, person stops, vehicle collisions, alarms. And then a new call that we initiated in 2020 was property checks, which is an intended property check that we, once we receive a complaint or a problem area, we specifically go to that location and log that we're there checking. And as you can see, that's jumped up quite a bit. We do probably two or three thousand of those a year, several throughout the night. But also, let's, you know, if the property owners that had the issue say that we're not doing anything or working it, we've got some numbers to show that we are, and we actually have some figures to show that we've been making some results. But as you can see, most of the calls are in the same area, same number. But again, in 2022, 2023, we're working with four to six officers less per year, which is almost doubling the workload on each officer.
Chief, come in those alarms, if all of them are to be false alarms.
I don't have them numbered, but just probably, I'd say most of them are. You know, false alarms or an employer arriving early, don't have the code. A very, very small percentage is a national burden.
Did a lot of repeat false alarms?
Not that many. I'd say just what comes to mind, the latest one we had was the high school was going off several times a night for about a week, but we remedied that at ESR.
Amy, your predecessor was working on a fine for recessing false alarm. I don't know whatever happened.
We got that in effect. We just wanted to make an issue and work on it, but it's not really a-
It's more of an issue in county when you've got to have to drive all the way down there with the false alarms.
But we don't really have a too bad of an issue with it, because a lot of these businesses, someone gets called, you know, the key holders, someone gets called, and they're not, they get fixed pretty quickly. But like you said, a lot of these remote areas in county, those residents or key holders don't live here. Okay, the next page shows annual completed police reports, which should be broken down into just incident reports and collision reports. As you can see, 2019, 22, very relative in numbers. You get to 2023, and it drops down, decrease a little bit. I'm going to attribute that to good policing. And then you see a reduction in collision reports, which honestly, I see more traffic, you know, coming through Franklin on a daily basis, year-round, than I ever have. Actually, sitting back there, it kind of dawned on me, I was wondering why we would have that collision report decrease. And I'm kind of thinking a lot of it can be attributed to the Georgia Road construction. Putting that median in the middle, that's where a lot of our traffic collisions has happened over the years. So, eliminating that crossover, I think, has reduced our traffic collisions. Not that we don't have it, because that's probably the brunt of our call load during the days, traffic collisions. And the last page is just kind of a year review of Miss Langus activity that we've done. We established the remote FPD office at the Friends of the Greenway, which is a very primitive office space, but we still use it. That's where we store our EVAC and our regular patrol bike, which we use often. I actually got on it the other day and I froze to death. We were looking for a mental subject that was on the Greenway with a knife, so I got on it and used it. We implemented the use of Carfax for Police Program, which is a very good investigative tool and also helps us with traffic accident investigations. I created an online reporting for minor incidents and collisions via our website to kind of alleviate some of the unnecessary calls to people's homes or businesses to do a report for. So, it kind of takes the workload off some of the officers. We revitalize our participation in the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program, which we were able to get points accrued through our activity, which we've been pretty active in it this year. We took over the Safe Kids Leck County chapter in cahoots with the Fire Department. We're both doing it together, since primarily we both kind of do it with the same vision of safety. We implemented the Ring for Public Safety media platform, which is going well. We participated in the two medication take-back events. It's typically done in April and October of each year. But we also have the medication take-back vault or cabinet in our lobby. And last year, we took in 364 pounds of medication.
Thanks for that.
You were, so that's a lot of medication. Believe it or not, we have to empty it quite often.
No, I'm in the season, so I have to deal with it.
Oh, you can, yeah, I'm searching, man. We'll bring it to you, yeah, I'm searching. You wouldn't believe the medications people bring in, turning in on a daily basis. It's pretty incredible.
You can resell them. Incinerate.
Oh, is that what we do with it, is burn it?
What the sheriff's office does. We've had a portable incinerator.
Burn it. The Phil the Police Car food drive, I started back in the fall. Cleaned it out twice, and we totaled 621 pounds of food with that. Back in the fall, the command staff and town administration attended the Chick-fil-A leadership experience at the Chick-fil-A headquarters in Atlanta, Georgia. And I must say, that was a very awe-inspiring experience and motivational. It was very motivational for me. We asked one of our officers that went. He's been writing quotes on our blackboard every day. That's motivated him to do that, so. Any little bit we can take back helps. As a police department, we have performed at least 35 street closures for events and festivals last year, which will be street closures or parades, which is, you know, that's a lot on us to do, but it's also good to see that there's that much activity in town. The evidence room, which is managed by Diane Mahoney, our administrative assistant, has been trying to purge the evidence room, because we have evidence in there from the beginning of time, and it's cluttered. And so, she's taken it upon herself, and she's made some headway, getting rid of some evidence, releasing back to victims, and also some auctioned off by statute, and the money is reallocated back to the school system. So, so far, and she's been doing it just two or three months now, she's relocated, reallocated $727.31 back to the local school board. Back in the summer, we had an EVAC donated by the Nine Hill Bike Shop, which I mentioned earlier. And unfortunately, we had two former FPD officers pass, being Larry Moses and Donna Hogsden, over this past year. So, I look forward to 2024. Got some plans and ideas to put into effect, and hopefully, we'll have a successful police staff here.
Chief, thank you for that report. Before you became chief, we had an outside agency come in and do an evaluation of our police department. And one of the things that they, I think, pointed out that we'd had a few issues with, and it looks like you're addressing that, is to make sure we had a good system on evidence, taking it in, properly identified, properly stored, and properly returned to whoever needs to be returned to. I'm glad to see that you all have got that plan underway now, and you're able to take care of that situation.
Yeah, Ms. Mahoney does a great job, and I don't, I'm not as familiar with it as she is. She's been doing some training on it, but it's not as easy, and probably, I can tell you, it's not an easy process to get dispositions from the court.
A five-year-old can take it in, it takes them back to Congress and get rid of it.
It's not easy. Again, she makes her good headway.
Probably get into, like Mike is saying, is getting, taking care of it after you take it in. When people wait for a while, and it's supposed to go back to them, and they show up one day, right out of the blue, said, "I want those tires that y'all picked up from my house a year and a half ago," and you can't find them. Those are the issues you run into sometimes if you don't have a good system on taking it in, identifying it, storing it, and have a procedure to dispense with it. So, thank you for doing that.
The chief won't brag on himself on this, but I will. He is going to be part of the coal for the cause, so he will be up in the bag in January.
So, thanks for your support.
So, great damage.
Bring a lot of food, money, and coats.
Would you like some pocket warmers to take with? That's great. Congratulations. Thank you for doing that, chief.
How long are you going to be in there for?
24 hours.
No.
So, I'm doing, I hope I'm doing the first part, and Sheriff Hobers is doing the second 24 hours. It's a little friendly competition, because I need all the support from you.
All right, nice.
Thank you for that report. I'm from the council. Any of the members of the council have anything they would like to bring our attention to at this time? I'll start with Mr. Vice Mayor.
I hope this year we can do anything in our power to support the police department to help address the issue of speeding in downtown. What does that be, looking at staff that specializes in that or other mitigation measures? Because it's a problem.
I'll refer to our former vice mayor to see anything they have.
I just think the public hearing tonight was special. I just think it was handled well. It was attended well. People had right to be heard, and I just, I was pleased with it.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis. Actually, I will. You had a moment of silence for former Alderman, Earl Curtis, our last-
You had a moment of silence for former Alderman, Verlin Curtis, our last meeting, and I didn't get a chance at the end to say anything, but I really always respected Verlin, and he and I didn't see eye to eye all the time, but we always got along, and he'd always let me know if I wrote something in the paper that he didn't like, he'd be the first one to come and let me know. But we always had a mutual respect for each other. I'll never forget, four years ago, when I first ran for office, he came in and he said, "Mike," he said, "I'm going to vote for you." He said, "If you raise my taxes, I'm not voting for you next time." And so, but really, 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 he had a strong conviction and great integrity, and I always respected him for that, he believed in what he believed in.
Absolutely. Mr. Corp.
Digest. Two things, actually, and I don't, first one's briefer, if it's not too late, I'd like to see if we could save the trees next to the clock tower, I don't know if that's up to the garden club or the county, but I think we should look at mitigating the sidewalk around them instead of cutting them down. The second thing involves our conditional zoning that we adopted last meeting. After that meeting, I got to thinking, because what we passed doesn't really do anything for anybody, it was just, it was just a compromise and won't be effectual in any type of way. Would it not have been better if, or it would have been legal to pass a conditional zoning that only applied to upzoning? Like if you were zoning from residential to commercial, then your conditional zoning is triggered and comes to us, because that would have been a better tool, because that's the, that's the cat we were trying to skin.
Yes, I think you could apply it that way, I think functionally that's what you'll see anyway, because it's mostly going to be upzones.
But upzoning would allow us to, to decrease that size, to actually capture people that were going to do it. Whereas right now, even, even a downzone is going to fall into it. But anyway, that was more procedural question of, I think there's a better way for us to get conditional zoning than what we actually passed. What we passed is all right, but there's a way to accomplish the goal that we originally set out to accomplish in conditional zoning, and that's by applying it only to upzoning.
Mr. Tompo.
At this time, thank you.
I meant a few words.
I like them all.
Last but certainly not least, Miss Solane.
Well, I had, just over the Christmas holidays, or the holidays, gone back up and checked out the skate park, and honestly, there were kids and adults everywhere, so me, I had that in the paper as one of the good things in 2023, and I just, I'm very glad that that got done, so that's a good thing. And there's no fence around it or anything.
I was just about to say, I wouldn't put a fence around it.
And the other thing is just that I, I am really happy, last night I was very glad that the station was going to be open, the, not no wrong door, but.
Warming station.
But downtown door. And I, I think to the extent that we have to figure out about getting more volunteers, that seems to be a limiting factor, I think we ought to put our heads to that about how, how we can help get more volunteers there, because it was cold last night, and I was in my warm bed, very happy that we had a place that some other people could go to as well. So, that's it, looking forward to 2024.
Well, I'll sort of wrap it up and I'll echo what Mr. Lewis said. Verlin Curtis was a, was a strong leader in our community for a number of years, sat on this council for I don't know how many years, two or three terms anyway, and was very honest, very dedicated to what he did, and we mentioned him in our last meeting about his passing, and the town sent him a sympathy card and some flowers and to the family, and I passed around earlier a thank you note from the family thanking the board and the staff for remembering Mr. Curtis. So sometimes you don't realize how much contribution a person make until they're not here. So we appreciate his life and his legacy and what he did, and we'll miss him. The other thing is that we are scheduled to have our annual retreat on January the 26th, and so I've been thinking about some good opportunities for our board members. One of the things that the mayor gets to do, besides not vote, is he gets to make assignments for people to serve on various committees.
Second.
So I've been working on the list here lately, and I'll unveil that to you all when we have our work session on the 26th, so. I would like to say in closing that I appreciate working with this council, we've done a lot of good things this past year, a lot of good things left to be done, we appreciate your efforts, we appreciate your enthusiasm, we appreciate your honesty, and we appreciate your commitment to the people who make up our town. So thank you all, and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Do you know where our January 26th meeting is going to be?
To be determined.
It'll be at the Vineyard at High Hall, Scaly Mount.
The next regular town council meeting will be February 5th here, and the town offices will be closed on my birthday, January 15th. So if you want to send me a birthday present, I, I'm sorry, but I can't accept gratuities being an elected person, so anyway, celebrate that day with your family. And I mentioned the retreat, and so that's all we have for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll, I'll make that motion, but when, when are taxes due?
The 8th.
The 8th.
Friday.
All right, Friday, the 8th.
You went to 2% on Monday.
Taxes are due.
And I'm not refunding it.
If you want to, if you want to get some credit on your income taxes, pay them before the end of December.
Okay. All right, motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn, second.
Second.
They made a motion to second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, that motion is unanimous. Thank you all, have a good evening, and a good rest of the week.